I don't have Derek.
Okay, all right, we'll call to order and Commissioner Gaines, you have prayer and pledge this morning, please.
Okay. Dear God, bless us today as we do our work in your name. Grant us wisdom and insight as we perform our duties to your glory. Thank you for giving us this path to the opportunity to serve our constituents of Hillsdale County. It's been an honor and privilege to do so. We go forth now in your presence with gratitude and humility with your blessing and guidance, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for that. Public comment, anyone on that would like to address the board at this time? There will be a second public comment at the end of the meeting, plus we have the public hearing for the budget this morning. One more call out to the public. Hearing none, we'll move along. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move as presented.
I want to talk about 20-110. I just have a question on it. I don't necessarily need to pull it off, but I have a question.
Well, I think we need to pull it off in order to ask your question, so.
Okay. Fine.
So 20-110, we'll pull it and put it down under you, Ruth, so you can ask your question.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I would support Namu's motion then to approve the consent agenda without 110.
Okay, is there any further discussion or changes? So we'll do a roll call as far as the consent agenda.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Carolyn? Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes five to zero. Correspondence is listed. Is there any comments on correspondence? Hearing no comments on correspondence, we'll move to the regular agenda.
I'd like to move, I'd like to move to the amend the regular agenda. I'm going to remove 2116 just for revision and bring it back at the next meeting.
Oh, David just gave us a revised one.
I know.
Okay.
Yeah.
I second that.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I think we need to put on the agenda, add to the agenda, the issue of accepting the loan that Stephanie has got for us. I think we need to put that on so we can deal with that today for the HVAC system.
Okay, so under your report, the loan for HVAC?
I don't care, I don't care where you put it, Mr. Chairman, but it needs to be there somewhere.
We'll put it on your finance.
I have Mr. McLaughlin on the phone. Is there any way we can get that done earlier so he doesn't have to listen to the whole meeting, please?
I think that's a good idea. Let's move them off.
I can't believe that he would not be totally interested in everything that we're doing in Hillsdale County.
Well, let's see. I've got five minutes according to. If everyone's agreeable to it, we'll jump right to that right now. But we need to finish approving the agenda. So I think we've got a support, Julie's moved.
I believe the removal of 2116 and the addition of the loan for the HVAC system under finance was supported by Commissioner Carolyn.
Okay, is there any other changes to the regular agenda? Hearing none, Jody will do a roll call.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Caswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Okay, that passed and so we've got about five minutes before Mary Beth. We could slip Mr. McLaughlin in and so Bruce, you or Stephanie, you have the floor.
Well, I will, I will defer to Stephanie. You know Mr. McLaughlin, so go ahead, Stephanie.
Okay, Eric is here to answer any questions. Eric is here to answer any questions. We did receive four notes. We did receive four notes. And Eric, did I send those to you? And Eric, did I send those to you?
I received the Huron Community Bank bid, but not the others.
So I'll, so I'll, Southern Michigan Bank and Trust. Southern Michigan Bank and Trust. Is that .75%? Is that .75%? Huron Community, is that? Huron Community, is that?
Stephanie, Stephanie, you're getting a lot of feedback. It's really hard to understand you. Is it all right if I read them? I got them here in front of me. Okay, we received from Century Bank. We received from Century Bank and Trust a bid for 1.64%. And I have a question on that, Mr. McLaughlin. Then we received two bids from Huron County Bank. And you give me a grimace if I'm screwing anything up here, Stephanie.
Huron County was for pay early and, and just pay as scheduled. That's why the two different proposals.
Okay, one of them was, one of them was for 1.7%, one of them was for 1.5%. And then we received from Southern Michigan Bank and Trust a bid. The rate of interest was .75%. And they gave us two options on that bid. One was to do it in a four-year period, like, which is what we requested. The other is to allow a six-month draw period at the beginning. Only pay interest and then for the next four years payoff as we request, it would basically be a four and a half year bid. Does anybody want me to repeat any of those commissioners? Okay, Stephanie, are you no longer echoing?
I don't know.
Yep, you're good now. All right, go ahead.
So it's up to the commissioners what you'd like to do with that. Eric, do you have any comments? We have the resolution out there as well. We have the resolution out there as well.
I don't have any comments on the bids. The, the bid that you find the most advantageous to the county is the one that, is the one that you should award. The resolution is a very simple resolution. It authorizes the installment purchase financing, the acquisition of the equipment by, by way of purchasing from a vendor and selling the whole thing to the bank as the finance, as the lender and the purchaser of the financing. There will be a contract, an installment purchase contract that effectuates this financing over the period of time that you've described. And it delegates the authority to, to Stephanie and the county clerk. In the absence of either one of them, the other one can act to award the financing to the, the winning bank and the winning bidder and to sign all the documents necessary to get the financing completed.
Bruce, I have a question. This is Ruth. Bruce, I have a question. Is it okay if I ask?
Go ahead, Ruth.
Where is Mr. McLaughlin from? Who are you representing, Mr. From? Who are you representing, Mr. McLaughlin?
My apologies. I'm a partner with the law firm at Dickinson Wright, a member of the Public Sector Finance Group.
He does all our tax revolving fund bonds for us.
Okay, I have, I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. Eric, on the century, on the century. Okay, Eric, on the Century Bank and Trust.
Okay, Eric, on the.
It says.
It says that the interest.
We got lousy connections here.
We got lousy connections here.
Mr. McLaughlin, I would ask you to, if you could please, because delays coming on your end, the feedback.
Okay. The interest rate is 1.64% Mr. McLaughlin, and it says whether or not the county would choose to prepay the loan. What does that, what does that entail? What does that mean? That we're going to pay 1.64% on the full amount for four years, whether we prepay it or not?
Well, I would, I would want to see the language, but to me, as you read that, to me, that says that you have the option of prepaying that, that financing. In other words, it's 1.64% and you have the option to prepay. So take, compare it to the Huron Community Bank bid, which had a lower interest rate for the non-callable option. So the 1.5% Huron bid was non-callable and the 1.7% was callable. So you pay a little bit more for the option to, to call early. The way you read the Southern Bank and Trust bid to me, sounds to me like they're saying it's 1.64% whether you prepay it or not. But, but again, I'd want to see the actual written, written words to, to give the definitive answer, but it sounds like that's what they're saying. Our bid is 1.4%. You can prepay it or you don't.
Eric, I did send that to you in an email, so you should have that now.
Now, my other question is on, and this is more for us as commissioners so that we understand the implication. On Southern Michigan Bank and Trust, which is the best interest rate, if we were to take the, if we were to take the four and a half year maturity.
Bruce? Southern wasn't the lowest. County National was, 7.73.
Okay, I don't have County National.
It should have been in your email.
I got four of them last night. Okay, so for, okay, County National is the lowest 1.73%. Did they do anything strange or weird like Southern Michigan or Huron or any of those, or did they just submit the bid?
There's no prepay penalty.
Okay, so they just.
Email, it says bid HVAC. It doesn't list the bank's name. I apologize for that. And they also waived a bank fee as well.
I have a question. This is Ruth. Stephanie, how come all the commissioners didn't get this email that has this information in it? Because I didn't get anything about this ahead of time.
I did send it late yesterday. I received bids up until going on quarter to five. And I do have it in an email to travel girl.
Okay, I'll look.
Hey Ruth, Stephanie did send it to all the commissioners at.
427.
I didn't, I didn't get it.
455, but in any event, we were all copied on it.
Okay, I didn't get it because I'm looking right at my email right now. Sorry.
I'm resending.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
With this 0.73 from Hillsdale County National Bank, if that's the best bid and that's just a straightforward bid, then it's pretty obvious we got to take that one. But I would also like to take time to thank Stephanie. She put together a very quick turnaround on this thing and really spent a lot of time to get everything taken care of. And I want to thank Mr. McLaughlin as well. This has turned around very quickly and we've got excellent bids in front of us. And when you can borrow money for 0.73%, that's about like getting it for nothing. You better take advantage of it. So I want to thank Stephanie for all of your hard work on this. She did a good job.
You're welcome.
Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
So the question I have here is for the HVAC. Correct me if I'm wrong, it waived, so we don't have any prepayment penalty, the County National Bank one?
Correct.
Looking at that, and that, I think this was I think the email that came, this is about 455. It's under bid for HVAC. So I think, I want to thank Stephanie too for this and I appreciate this on a timely manner. And I think I replied to Stephanie last evening when we received this.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do you want a motion?
Please.
I move that we accept the bid from, from County National Bank at an interest rate of 0.73% for the HVAC system.
I support that.
So the resolution that Stephanie sent out, do you want to include in that motion, Bruce and, and Namu, that I can sign off on this resolution?
I certainly would, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Jody just indicated I don't sign it. She'll just fill it out as far as the, yeah, and the clerk will have to sign it and then we'll pass it along to Stephanie. So we're good on that. So we just got the motion to accept the bid and we'll move forward. Jody will do a roll call unless there's further discussion.
I just want to also thank Mr. McLaughlin for his help in getting this turned around so quickly. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Caswell?
My pleasure.
Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Ruth, you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you, and you're welcome. Thank you, Eric. I'll be in touch with you later.
Okay, moving right along. We have Mary Beth at 9:15. Thank you for your patience, Mary Beth.
No problem.
You have the floor.
All right, well, thank you. Good morning, county commissioners. I'm here today to present on two items. One is to give you my quarterly report about activities and important things that the county commission should know that's occurring relative to mental health supports and services in Hillsdale County. You'll see in your packet, the report for this quarter. A couple of things to highlight. As you know, we've been working really hard with Wayne State University. I've talked before about the technical assistance that they're providing us around mental health supports in our jail. And right now, a couple of key things that are occurring is that we're looking at the opportunity to provide some law enforcement training. Specifically, they've asked for expanded training for road officers around interactions and treatment for those that they come across who are, who have intellectual and developmental disabilities. So we're working on that. The other thing that's occurring is that we are providing telehealth services in the jail. And that's specifically for dealing with the psychiatry of services that are provided. We have had a couple of glitches with the technology. Probably similar to what we've been experiencing today on this call, but we are working through that. And then the other challenge is that we are collecting data so that we can look at the impact of mental health supports in the jail. But there have been a little bit of a decrease and that's because of the, we do believe anyways, that it's related to the COVID-19, that the jail census has been down. In your packet, you'll also see information relative to our success, if you will, around retention and turnover rates with staff at Lifeways. We've worked really hard on that over the course of the last couple of years and you can see the impact of that relative to, we have gone from 2018 of a retention rate at about 68% to 95% with this last quarter, a quarter three of this year. And then our turnover rate has also gone down from 31% to 4% and our average time to fill has gone from 10 weeks to two weeks. And interestingly, that's still good outcomes considering the current situation, the pandemic that we're in. So again, a lot of work's being done and a lot of success on that as an organization. The other thing that you need to be aware of, I can't speak directly to the impact yet in Hillsdale County. Information will be forthcoming, but Midstate Health Network, all of the prepaid inpatient health plans in the state of Michigan have received a 35% reduction in SUD dollars, block grant dollars for prevention and treatment services. So there will be a reduction of funding to Hillsdale County. What that will look like, Midstate will be sending out notices soon. And, you know, we, we can talk about that as that moves forward, but I wanted you to be aware that that is, is coming, that the state did cut the funding for block grant. The other thing that's in your packet that I wanted you to be aware of is the fact that Michigan has passed during the COVID. I might have talked about this at the last presentation because it passed in April. This is state of Michigan is implementing a Michigan Integrated Crisis and Access Line. So this will be similar to like the 911 or the 211 number, which there'll be a main number across the state of Michigan that people can access for mental health. And then they will connect them with the local community mental health. And so there's work occurring on looking at streamlining that process and how will they connect that with the local community mental health. I'm a part of that work group to help iron out those processes because the last thing we want to see happen is that somebody gets dropped or lost in the transfer of the calls. So kind of stay tuned. They are looking at piloting it first with a couple of community mental health and then rolling it out statewide by the year 2022. So in another year, the next fiscal year. And then the other thing that I wanted you to be aware of is that we did get notice relative to the Governor Whitmer's budget for fiscal year 21. You'll see that near the end of the report. It breaks it out and it shows you the funding for general fund across the state for CMHs. It shows you the Medicaid funding across the state and autism. And what's important to note is that we did receive a 2% increase relative to Medicaid in healthy Michigan. And there was a 6% increase in autism funding across the state. They also provided additional funding for direct care wage, $2 an hour as a result of the whole COVID pandemic. And that is anticipated to expire the beginning of this next year. So it was just for this first quarter of this fiscal year of 21. And that is it for the quarterly report at this time. Are there any questions relative to the quarterly report? Bruce?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I just want to emphasize the importance of this turnover rate. And what a good job Mary Beth has done in terms of dropping that. And when we pointed out, the board pointed out that you can't have a good football team if you're constantly changing head coaches. You, you can't have a good organization if you're constantly changing people. It's impossible. I don't care what anybody says. And it was a real problem. And Mary Beth came back to us with some solutions to this problem, which we adopted. And you could see what's happened. And I think it's a real credit to her to see how quickly the turnover rate has dropped. And to know that we have much more stability in the organization today than we had before. And that's very important for the people that we deal with, our customers. When they come in the door, they see the same faces. And when we're having positions that do open up, we're getting them filled very quickly. And I've been involved with a lot of organizations over my, over my life. And sometimes you get leaders that will make excuses. That's all they do. And, oh, we can't do anything, you know, it's so terrible and so on and so. Beth is not one of those people. She figures out how to get it done and she gets it done. So I think she's to be commended. Now, the other piece of this is the reduction in our substance abuse powers. Now, the block grants quite often are captured by this MSA. And then they use those to fund programs that we have here in the county. When those, and then we're able to save our PA 2 dollars, those monies that we get through from the state, come back to the county directly. We get about 100,000 a year back, commissioners. And 50 of that goes to basically substance abuse problems in the county. The other 50 stays with us. Well, we have a pot of money. It's not huge, but we have some money there. And in times just like this, with the big shots up above us start whacking things, we can draw from that pot to help maintain some of those programs at least for a year in hopes that things will get better. So while the block grants are going away, we may very well be able to redirect some PA 2 money into those programs to keep them going. Now, it's limited. Like I say, we probably can only extend it for another year. But at least it buys us some time before we have to dramatically cut things. So thank you.
Yeah, the other thing to note about the PA 2, Bruce, is they, they sunset. Those dollars sunset. And I want to say it's coming up in the next couple of years. I don't remember. It's 25 or 23. But there's something to keep in mind about the PA 2 dollars.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Go ahead, Namu.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate Mary Beth giving us a brief interview about what's going on. And I just wanted to reflect as a board liaison and a chair to public, a safety board liaison to the sheriffs. I'm, I think it's, it's just very positive that when we are looking at the law enforcement and the training is being provided using the treatment for those that come across. I think that's phenomenal. I have personally seen it when I've visited the jail in the vicinity, that the telehead services. I think it's, it's a very positive thing that's been happening, that service. It's needed. I, I understand that the technology has been giving us issues and that's a problem. But I'm hoping that that would be, we kind of rectify those. I was actually very impressed as Mary Beth talked about the info success and retention on the staff, which is usually is a very critical subject. So from 2018 to, we're looking at from 68% to 95%. So I think that's on a very positive note. The other thing I was a little bit disappointed as I heard the prevention and treatment service when they, when it's going to come out, it's disappointing that the state decided to cut several funding there. So that, that is a little bit of a down, but other than that, the Michigan integration and the access line, I think, which would be very similar to the 911. I think that is a fabulous thing for our community. And I'm speaking for District 5, so you know, access for our community, that's very positive. So by 2022, I'm hoping as it's streamlined. That if not, so this is really a great contribution to positivity and I I only want to thank her today so much for coming and giving us this quarterly report. So I don't have any questions, but these were my comments today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mary Beth on the quarterly report? What else do you have for us this morning, Mary Beth?
Okay, so the other thing that I have is the report on the update for the millage. So you'll see in your packet is, it's twofold. One, it's to kind of review the, what we've been able to do with the millage dollars this, through the end of October of this year. Then to talk about where we are relative to the expenditure of those dollars. And then to submit to you our budget for next year's use of the millage funding. So let me go over that with you if you don't mind. You know, this, the report, what is important to note is that this goes from January through October, even though Lifeways is on a fiscal year, you are all on a calendar year as it relates to the use of the millage. And we have been able to implement, what you'll see in the report are the categories and services in which we proposed back in early part of this year, what we were going to utilize those dollars for. So one of them is to support the local Spark program, which provides intellectually developmental disability services for individuals in Hillsdale County. And they've been doing a lot of things around providing enrichment classes. The challenge has been with many of the services this year is because of COVID, it has greatly impacted our ability to provide the level of care that we had anticipated. We've had to move to a virtual platform for a lot of services. And the services provided by Spark is one of them as well. But they are providing art and music and they provide cooking classes and they provide opportunities for individuals who are isolated to be able to engage with their peers on a virtual platform. The other thing that we've been able to do is to provide services for the uninsured and the underinsured and the challenge there. And I think that some of the data around individuals, the increase we've seen of people being eligible for Medicaid in Healthy Michigan. And I think that a lot of the employment issues have seen an increase of people being able to access health insurance that they weren't able to prior is some of the reason why our numbers are lower for the individuals that were served who were uninsured in Hillsdale County. I also think and we know based on the data that individuals, when the pandemic initially hit, people were scared to reach out and access services. Our numbers are now starting to come back to the level that they were prior to April and May when the pandemic first hit. So that's important to note when you look at the data. We've also continued to provide supports to the Hillsdale County Jail. We've served over 207 individuals and provided over 1,000 services, 1,064. And those are services in the jail like crisis supports, counseling, coordination and for discharge and medication assistance for individuals. The other thing that we utilized the dollars for this past year was to support the mental health supports in the schools. As you might recall, the funding allowed for a match to draw down additional dollars for a total of around 264,000 for the intermediate school district in Hillsdale County. We were able to put in four mental health clinicians. And they cover Pittsfield, Reading, Waldron, Jonesville and Camden schools. The other thing that we were able to do is implement a trails program and a be kind program. Those are all evidence-based practices that the schools wanted to be able to implement in order to address some of the mental health needs of students. Also this past year, since we began providing mental health supports in January, we provided supports to Hillsdale Hospital and their emergency department for those individuals that are showing up who are in high acuity. So we've provided 75 services since January for that population. Again, like I indicated, it should be noted that because of the pandemic, we have seen a decrease in individuals accessing services. So what we had initially anticipated relative to funds, we are below, we are experiencing the same thing in Jackson County. And one of the things that the CDC, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention has recently released was that 41% of adults have delayed accessing care because of COVID. So we are seeing that locally. And when you look at the use of the millage dollars, the expenses at this point in time, we have utilized 295,484 of the dollars for Hillsdale County. If we project out based on the current utilization of services, we can anticipate that for this last quarter, that we were roughly utilized about 73. Did I get disconnected? Am I still there?
Yes, I hear you.
You're still there, Mary Beth.
Oh gosh, I thought I lost you guys. I'm sorry.
Everybody's muted, so it's like being in church.
Okay, well, I, for a minute there, I lost the screen. I'm like, oh no, I thought I lost you. So I'm sorry.
Keep going.
Okay, so we have, if we project out based on current utilization of the dollars, we, we can anticipate that we were used roughly about 74,000 for the remaining quarter. That will leave us with a projected carryover of about 320,000 for this fiscal year. So next I want to talk a little bit about what we're proposing to use. Now, what is important to note about the projections at this point in time is that there are 90-day windows, 90-day claim windows. So the data that was reported through the end of October, individuals still actually have 90 days to submit claims. So that, that number is a moving number, but it is a point in time as to where we are. I do am submitting the budget proposal to the county that for this next fiscal year, that we continue to utilize the funding as we had last year relative to continuing to support jail services, continuing to support telepsychiatry in the jails, continuing to support medications that are provided in the jail. Continue with the hospital support and the emergency department support. Also continue with the ADD, the Intellectual Developmentally Disabled Services that we've been able to provide this year. As well as providing mental health supports for the unin- underinsured. Also looking at continuing with the mental health school supports in their evidence-based programs. As well as looking at earmarking dollars for integrated health and crisis services. Now, this past year, we also earmarked funds for the emergency transport services and we did not utilize but a small portion of those dollars. We had challenges as a community around individuals in the ED who are being boarded and not having the ability to transport them with the local transport provider. We did earmark millage dollars to assist with that, but they did not utilize those funds. So I just want you to know that, but there is still a need and we are working with Hillsdale Hospital on negotiations with the different emergency transport provider for this next fiscal year. The other thing, when we look at this next year for the schools, we will be, schools will be implementing a countywide school mental health team. And that team is going to be assisting them in developing a standardized process across all the schools for how they screen and connect people with certain mental health services. So some of the dollars will help the intermediate school district with the development of that as well. Now with the carryforward that we have remaining from this fiscal year, which is the 329,000, one of the things that I am recommending and including in the budget is that the, you know, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention is reporting that as a result of this pandemic, two in five Americans are reporting mental health issues. If you look at any data relative to the impact of a natural disaster or pandemic on a community, you can anticipate an increased need of mental health needs within that community, you know, in the months, weeks and years to come. And so one of the things that we need to be able to do is to plan for that increased need within Hillsdale County. And it's going to be a result of the fact that people have been under social isolation, that the economy has had an impact on people as well. And with that carryforward, we want to be able to earmark those dollars for the integrated health clinic, for having a mobile crisis team in Hillsdale that can respond to individuals in the community who are in crisis, to support law enforcement and keep them out of the emergency department. And to look at putting into play a 23-hour crisis stabilization unit there at Care Drive, where people can come there and receive support 23 hours versus having to go to the emergency department. So you'll see in the proposal, the breakdown of that 329 carryforward for this next year, looking at earmarking 132,520 for a integrated health nurse practitioner, a full-time service for our community in Hillsdale, looking at crisis service expansion, and that's that putting into play a mobile team for Hillsdale County as well as having the crisis services onsite there at Care Drive. And then the last one is because of the fact that we can anticipate there's going to be an increased need for mental health in Hillsdale County, I would like to earmark about 47,324 for the mental health services for the uninsured who might be showing up without any benefits. So now I will leave it open to the county commissioners with any questions.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Nam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mary Beth, I just had you talking about, you know, which is on a virtual platform. I just wanted to hear a little bit about that.
So what they're doing, typically they would be having, and they have it there in their building, where individuals could show up and you could participate in the arts and crafts class. It's all about keeping them engaged with social opportunities. Because once they age out of the intermediate school district, there's not supports for them and they end up sitting just at home, kind of like what they're doing now sadly is, you know, they're isolated. This allows them with this virtual platform where they're still doing things like teaching them cooking and it's all done virtually through the Spark staff. So they set up a platform and they log in and it gives them the opportunity to continue to participate in activities with their, with their peers.
The other question is the 295,400 county, with that that would be left over to be carried over to the year 2021.
Yeah, that's where, when you look at that breakdown, that's where we're currently at relative to the expenditure through the end of October. Knowing that there's still claims outstanding for the 90 days as well as the projection for the use of the funding through the remaining of this calendar year. There will be, and that's what that projected carryforward there you see for 2020, there is carryforward of about 320,000.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mary Beth?
Art, I have a question.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Mary Beth, you're involved in a lot of different areas in the county with mental health services. What do you feel, what have you seen is the greatest unmet need that we have in the county that we need to be looking at tackling?
I would say the greatest unmet need is around the transporting of individuals who show up and need psychiatric inpatient. That's one. And the second one is for accessing, and the challenge is, is it's not doable in Hillsdale County, but what I see as a need is children in need of psychiatric inpatient placement. But that's not something Hillsdale County can resolve. That's an issue that we're working on at a statewide level relative to the fact that there's not enough beds available statewide. But that is a huge need in Hillsdale County. Some children are sitting in the ED for, you know, up to two weeks while we're trying to find a bed.
And I might add, Mr. Chairman, in regards to that, over the course of the last 20 years in the state of Michigan, the legislature and their respective governors have time and time again reduced the amount of state beds. And said, well, we can find other places and so on. And they've reduced them and reduced them and reduced them. There used to be facilities all over the state that you could send kids to. Today, there's two left, Bay Pines and and one of them's in the Upper Peninsula and the other was way up in Northern Michigan. The best facility that we had in terms of treatment for kids was at Maxi and it was closed the year after I left up to Lansing. So this is a problem that she's describing that is a direct result of political decisions made in Lansing. And she's right, we can't take care of it down here, but we can at least talk to people about it. You know, there's this, if I may, there's this belief among some people that mental illness is somehow not a disease or it can turn our heads the other way. Mental illness is no different than diabetes. If you have diabetes, it's a long-term problem that will never be cured, ever. But if you manage it, you do all the things you're supposed to, you can live a good life and you can live a long life. Mental illness is the same way. You'll never be cured. But if you manage it, take your vacations, which you're supposed to, you can live a very productive life. And we need to stop this nonsense, this silliness that somehow we don't have to treat the mentally ill, that we can just look the other way. And that gets back to when they show up to the emergency room and not getting them transported to a particular place in the state where they can get the help they, there's no excuse for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Mary Beth?
Yes, I have a question. This is Ruth.
Go ahead, Ruth.
Hi, Mary Beth.
Hi, Ruth.
I'm, I want to talk about the the Spark van. And I, I think I've asked this question before, but the other day, one of my constituents saw the Spark van sitting out on Waldron Street and that provokes questions from people about what the van can be used for. And also And also the problem that we're having at the hospital with, with transporting people. Now, I understand at the hospital, sometimes people require an ambulance and maybe sometimes they don't. But the question is, can any of the mental health money, millage money be used to help with providing transportation, the, the problem that we're having at the hospital where people are sitting in the ER and waiting for hours because reading emergency won't transport them? Can any of the millage money be used to help transport from there at the hospital? And in regards to that, the use of the Spark van, I think is limited because I asked that question before.
Yes.
Address that, please, Mary Beth?
Yes. So first, yes, the Spark van, it is, you know, it is, uh, purchased and utilized for the transport of specifically to that program. There would be a huge liability for them to be able to utilize that van to transport individuals in a mental health crisis. Um, that, that really is not, it's not the business model for the Spark program. Um, and secondly, to get to your point about, you know, uh, utilizing some other form of transport for individuals in crisis. I think the challenge is, is that when an individual is in the emergency department and a doctor has deemed that they need psychiatric inpatient placement, they are in a medical emergency, psychiatric emergency, medical emergency. The appropriate form of transportation is an ambulance. Now, they're designed to be able to address in the event that somebody gets in the van, gets into the, um, ambulance and maybe there's an underlying, uh, physical health issue that might arise during the transport. Somebody in a van will not have the abilities from the medical side to be able to treat. Um, I, we have tried to address the issue of transport by earmarking funds to support the ambulance service to transport. Um, and, uh, that did not happen. Um, they did not want to transport. They basically did, basically came out and said, they do not want to transport our patients. So we have had success with another ambulance service, uh, in partnership with, with the hospital. And we are looking at earmarking millage dollars to support that ambulance service for transport. And that is the most appropriate way to go. Um, it is not financially e- even viable for another organization to set up a transport service for only a couple of transports that occur, um, in a week. Uh, that would, that's not a financially viable business model. Um, that, you know, an ambulance service is designed for transporting emergencies. Um, and psychiatric isn't a, is an emergency. So, um, I, I just to assure you, Ruth, that we are earmarking dollars to support these, this other ambulance service to be able to do that.
Okay, thank you, Mary Beth. I want to ask you another question, please, about suicide prevention in Hillsdale County. This year, you earmarked $15,000 and I really, we were all very, very grateful for that. That was the, that's the first time any money I think has ever been allocated for Hillsdale County and that, that's very good of you to do that and we appreciate that. However, um, we got that money early in the year before the pandemic. And since the pandemic has happened, we haven't been able to use any of that money this year, unfortunately. We haven't been able to have hardly any events. We are doing everything virtually. We have done a lot of virtual events with Rebecca at Lifeways and piggybacked off what Jackson is doing. We still continue to meet every single month. Um, and we're doing everything we can. It's obviously not enough, but until we can start, um, meeting face-to-face and, you know, a lot of events and things that we want to do, we can't do. Um, so we haven't been able to use any of that money this year, but I would respectfully request that you remember suicide prevention in Hillsdale County going forward, especially after the pandemic is over with, when we can get really going again, um, because it seems like unless I bring it up, it doesn't happen and it doesn't get any attention from anybody. And I'm going off the commissioner board and I'm not going to have a voice on the commissioners anymore. And so I just would respectfully request that you don't forget about suicide prevention. It's part of mental health in Hillsdale County and our suicide numbers are up this year and it's getting worse. And we need, we need every dollar and every resource that we can get to help address it. So I would appreciate you. Thank you.
No problem. Absolutely. We'll, um, always take into consideration the support for the Suicide Coalition in Hillsdale County. Absolutely.
We have about, we have about one minute. Is there any last comments or questions for, uh, Mary Beth? We need to go to the public hearing in about 60 seconds.
Oh.
Mary Beth, anything to add?
I don't think so.
I want to thank you for your time and thank you for your report.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Yep, thank you.
All right. With that said, I will entertain a motion for us to go into the public hearing.
So move, this is.
Second, this is Bruce.
Thank you. And Jody will read the roll call.
Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
Okay, we are in the public hearing. Is there anyone that's online that would like to ask a question or a comment, or any of the commissioners for that matter?
No. That's for the comment.
I do have a comment if I could, Mr. Commissioner.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for letting me speak. Uh, just to kind of give you a little background on this. As most of you already know, the county has been in dire need of a program to replace our drain accounting system. As a certain vendor decided to end any further development and support of this system. During many conferences that David Holcomb has attended with other IT directors and government employees, he quickly saw that many of us were in the same boat as they had the same vendor. David was able to reach out to his peers and coordinate a project to develop a product that would be beneficial for all participants with the cost of development being shared among those that joined. He was able to negotiate with a vendor to develop a drainage county system that will be utilized by at least 13 other counties at the onset. In recognition of David's efforts, the Michigan Government Management Information Sciences, or MIGIMUS, organization has awarded David Holcomb the 2020 IT Professional of the Year Award. This award recognizes an outstanding individual who advances and supports the use of technology within the government workplace to improve efficiencies and services and also provides service to the IT community and contributes to professional organizations. I would all like you to join me in congratulating David on this accomplishment. Thank you.
Thank you.
And David can hear you. He's standing over there listening with a big ring.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comment, please? This is Stephanie.
Go ahead, Stephanie. Go ahead.
I just wanted to, um, verify that the publication was published in the Daily News on, uh, Saturday that we've agreed upon. So just want to make that as well.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I just want you commissioners to know, um, you may or may not remember, I went off to a Capital Improvements Project Conference and came back and sent out to everybody in the county, all the different departments and so on, uh, a letter of explanation and a request for capital improvement projects that they would like to see done. We received back, I think, five, five projects, if I remember correctly. And in this budget, there is a line item for capital improvement projects. And Derek, he's online, so he can tell us the, the specific line if you want to. But there are four projects in line to be funded next year out of this line. And they were all projects that were submitted. One is to replace the tile in the lobby and the office areas at the jail. It'll be about 4,000 bucks. Uh, I guess they're in pretty rough shape. Two other projects are at the front of the court. One is to create a private conference room at the front of the court so that when people come in, right now what they have are portable walls and you can hear up over the top and there's no privacy whatsoever. And some of the things that are discussed out there, you need privacy, uh, some of the family issues that are discussed. The other issue is that the carpeting will be replaced out at the front of the court with the money that's here. Now those two projects, um, John Paul, John Paul was very good about getting written confirmation that those two projects, the cost of them, two-thirds of that cost will be refunded to this, to the county through the program that they have with the state of Michigan. I forget the exact name of the program, but they get two-thirds of their cost back. That will come back over the next two years. Okay, so in the end, it seemed like a no-brainer. We can get brand-new carpeting out there and there hasn't been any since the place was put up and we can create this more private, uh, conference room and only costs us a third of the cost of what it would normally cost. The, the fourth project was a building that was requested under emergency management to be built out close to the 911 center. It has nothing to do with 911, but it's a, it's a building to put up out there into which they will be to store supplies, uh, or emergencies going into the future, keep their vehicles inside and so on. Uh, so those four projects are being funded through this budget. For the first time, we have a capital improvements project and people submitted these. Now, for our current commissioners, but more so for future commissioners, there were two other projects that were submitted. One of them, uh, is, was submitted by Matt Ward, the Drain Commissioner. He would like to see a, a new building put up out at the Drain Commission Office so he can keep all his equipment inside. That's a $250,000 project, he estimated when he turned it in. We didn't have the money to do that this year. But I certainly think it makes sense to start long-term planning towards that because it does make sense. The amount of money he spends on equipment, uh, and the value of that equipment, it makes a lot more sense to keep it inside if we can. So that's kind of a long-term project. The other item is a more of a historical type project and it's in the Circuit Court. Judge Smith submitted this. It's in the Circuit Court. And he would like to have the drop ceiling removed from, from that's in there and the old, I guess, metal, uh, ceiling restored. Could be quite expensive. And at the end of the day, it wouldn't have anything other than it would, it would really look nice, but the utility of it is he was not able to determine at that time if there's any historical grants that are available. But there's going to have to be, I think, something like that or, or that project isn't going to be able to get off the ground because the cost of it and the return on it, uh, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. But there are grants that come up and they're available that could, over time, end up paying for the whole thing. Those were the only things that were submitted, uh, as I remember. Now, I'm getting older, so I don't remember as well as I used to, but I believe those would be the things that were submitted. And so we were able to fund. Oh, there was one more project out at the front of the court and that was to redo the bathrooms. And, uh, we didn't, we chose not to do that with the other two projects we were doing out there. I will say this, when that building was put up back whenever, they certainly put a lot of urinals and toilets in out there. Oh, you've got more urinals and toilets than you can shake a stick at, but uh, be that as it may, that's another project that we may look at down the line. And if you, if a future board decides to do that project, again, two-thirds of that cost would come back to the county or the state would pay for. So I just wanted you to know that those items were in there. Thank you.
I have a quick question for Bruce.
Go ahead.
Hi, Bruce. This is Namu. I have a quick question for you that that you just mentioned, especially about the drop ceiling. Are, are any of those projects, uh, concerning repairs as it relates with some kind of, uh, deterioration or is it just cosmetics? You're muted.
I don't understand your question.
Question that were passed off, was any of them just repairs because of deterioration or was it anything in regards with cosmetics?
Well, we're putting in, we're putting in a new ceiling in the court, in the jail. They need it because I guess the old ceiling is beat to smithereens and looks horrible.
The one in the court? The drop ceiling that you talked about, was it just something to do with cosmetics or was it just something because it was leaking?
We're not, we're not doing any drop ceiling in the court. What I said was that that's a future project. It was submitted. It's, it's not being done. It's not being funded in this budget. But if it ever is funded down the line, it would be a cosmetic. Uh, it would be a cosmetic thing. It would not be anything that's, there's nothing leaking or anything of that sort. It just, it would be cosmetics should a commission down the road decide to fund it.
Thank you.
Any other comments concerning the budget items or, uh, special revenue funds? Anyone? Doesn't have to be a commissioner, but it can be anyone from the public or anyone listening in. This is, we are in the public hearing portion of the meeting. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I would have to close the hearing.
Sounds like Namu made the motion and Ruth supported. Is that correct?
Yep. Correct.
Thank you. Jody will read off. Hold one.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. We are back. And Julie, if you don't mind, we'll skip you for right now. We'll get to after finance. We'll go right to finance. Um, however, let me back up a minute. We had a standing order that I don't think we got done unless, uh, unless Scott already had his say. Um, Scott, are you still on?
Yes, yeah. That, that was what I wanted to, uh, talk about. Yes.
Okay, so you're all set?
I am all set. Thank you.
Very good, sir. Thank you.
Mark, this is Ruth.
Go ahead.
Um, this is for Stephanie. Stephanie, I still not, never got anything from you. Will you please send it to my county email and try that?
You're muted, Stephanie.
That spacebar just doesn't work for me. Um, what is your email on it, the county one?
It's, uh, r.brown at c o.hillsdale.m i.us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so moving on, Julie, if you're okay, we'll take your report right after Bruce. We'll jump right into this, uh, budget items, if that's okay?
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bruce, you have the floor, please.
Okay, Resolution 2118, Mr. Chairman, that was sent out, uh, in your packet. And then there was a second resolution sent, uh, to, to add some other items to that. Um, at your deference, which one are we using? The second one or the first one?
Jody's trying to sort all these papers because Derek brought some new ones up here. Uh, or new printed ones, I should say. Um, I would prefer the one that was sent out yesterday, please.
Okay. Now commissioners, just so you understand, uh, the changes that were made at the previous meeting that you requested and that were passed was reflected in the 20-118 that you received in your packet. Okay? There was additional change that was made. It had to do with transferring money from the CPL fund and bringing stipends. And the decision that the second item had that Derek just gave to you is removing those stipends from the budget and reflecting the fact that the $15,000 will not be transferred from the CPL fund to the general fund. Now, as you can see on the, and I will read this to you. It says, um, "To the Honorable Board of Commissioners, we recommend the following increases slash decreases", which are in parentheses, "to the revenue side of the 2021 tentatively approved general fund budget." And then the account number, 101-00000402000, current tax collection, it's an increase of $3,000. We did not reflect the fact the solar farm, I believe it's out on Lake Pleasant Road, Lake Wilson Road, uh, was going to be finished by the end of the year. So we're, uh, we're increasing the tax collections by $3,000 to reflect that. The next one is 101-0000478000, soil erosion permits. We're increasing that by $7,000. Uh, we did not reflect the fact, and Marty's pretty certain about it now, that next year, there will be two more solar farms built. And when those solar farms are built, they have to build, they have to pull soil erosion permits. And that money all comes back to us. So we increased that by 7,000. Um, 101-0000655002, circuit court contempt fines. Uh, we're increasing that by $1,500. We looked back at past history and felt that that was, that was an appropriate thing that we could do. Uh, 101-0000685004 prosecuting attorney blood testing. Um, again, we look back at past history and so we increased that by $2,000. 101-0000692000 is inmate reimbursement. Again, looking back at past history and, uh, sharpening our pencils, we felt that could go up 10,000. Or excuse me, 2,000. Uh, 101-0000676001 is child abuse neglect fund. Um, that fund has traditionally been carryover year after year has been about $40,000. With what we had done in the original budget, the carryover was going to be 50, 52,000. So, uh, we can increase the amount we take out of that, uh, 10, by $10,000 and still keep the fund balance in that fund where it's amount. And then the last one is 101-000676007. Contribution from the CPL fund 273.00. That's being reduced by 15,000. The budget had built into it that that transfer was going to take place. So the total revenue increase is $10,500. These revenue amendments make the total revenues for the 2021 general fund budget 12,949,745. We recommend the following increases slash decreases to the expenditure side of the 2021 tentatively approved general fund budget. 101-00215702015, Board of Commissioners, Administrative Secretary Stipend, this was one of the stipends that was eliminated, 3,500. 101-000215702016, FOIA Processor Stipend, uh, $1,000 eliminated. 101-00215702017, Credit Card Processing Stipend eliminated, $500. 101-00266808000, Probate Attorney Contracts. Um, we had, don't take this wrong, Mr. Chairman. We had put in an additional $10,000 on top of what we paid last year into that line item because the contracts weren't yet settled. Last year after the contracts were settled, they came in higher than what we had budgeted. So this year we were trying to be careful and put extra in. We don't need that extra. The contracts are being taken care of. Like this thing raised last year, so the 10,000 is not needed. So we removed that. Uh, 101-00262727000, Election Office. We looked back at the history and the office supplies in a non-election year are, uh, have consistently been below $500. So we reduced it back to 500. Uh, so we cut $1,000 there. Um, 101-00681701000, Veterans Burial Allowance, we reduced by $500. Again, looking at the last couple of years, uh, the cost of veterans' burials has been right around 8,000, 8,500 bucks. So we had a little room there. We cut that 500. 101-0085271003, HRA reimbursement, uh, we could reduce that by 1,000. And to be quite honest, this one and the next two are a crap shoot, uh, with the insurance side of things. You, you never know exactly where it's going to be. Um, and where you lose in one area and insurance you can gain in another area. So at the end of the year, it comes out okay. So we felt we had $1,000 there we could take out, reduce. Uh, 101-0085271001 is insurance buyout, uh, that's reduced by $1,000. And 101-0085271006, HSA Employee Funding is reduced by $1,700. So the total expenditure decrease is $20,200. These expenditure amendments make the total expenditures for the 2021 general fund budget 12,949,745. Respectfully submitted Bruce Caswell and I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Support. This is Ruth.
So we have to have a balanced budget. Okay? And so with the change that been made that were voted on with previous things, these are the things we did to get it back in balance and have a balanced budget.
Any questions on this resolution? Hearing none. We'll vote.
Commissioner Gaines.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell.
Yes.
Commissioner Carolyn.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Resolution passes five to zero. Please continue, Bruce.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I have resolution 2119 next. Approval of the 2021 general fund budget submitted at the Board of Commissioners meeting on Tuesday. I do not have that in front of me. Um, how do you want to handle that to read it?
Is your email available, Bruce?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll email it to you.
Uh, send it to the BK as well. I'm sitting in front of my big computer. I can't see that stupid little.
Okay.
Okay, um, Derek brought us up a, a good copy here. So while you're waiting on your email, Bruce.
You want me to go on the next, you want me to go on the next one while I'm waiting?
Well, I think we need to approve them in the order.
Okay.
Um, I'll read it to you and then you can comment.
Okay.
Bruce, I'm sorry, but that resolution isn't in the vet board packet. I thought it was and that's how I was going to send it to you.
That's why, that's, that's why I don't have it. I couldn't find it in the word packet.
I'll email it, I'll email it right now, commissioners.
Okay. So email and Derek will send that out. I'll read it while you're waiting for that email. Um, to the Honorable Board of Commissioners, resolution 20-119. We recommend approval of the 2021 final general fund budget for the County of Hillsdale as proposed. The 2021 final budget summary is total 2021 revenue, Fund balance projected January 1st, 2021, The total 2021 revenue and fund balance Total 2021 expenditures, excuse me, 12,949,745. Fund balance projected December 31st, 2019 was 1,541,912.
Respectfully, respectfully submitted Bruce Caswell.
Thank you.
Support. This is Ruth.
There's a, this is Derek. There's a typo.
Yeah.
It should be, the last line should be 2021, not 2019.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
Right on there.
Okay. Okay, Jody will fix that. And Jody was asking me while, about the minute you started commenting, Derek, I appreciate that. All right, any questions or comments on, uh, yes, by the way, we need the support, please.
I supported it.
Oh, did you? Yes, thank you. I didn't hear that. All right, so Bruce, Bruce submitted, Ruth supported. Is there any questions on the document? Or on the resolution? Hearing none, we will do a roll call.
Commissioner Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell.
Yes.
Commissioner Carolyn.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines.
Yes.
All right, it passes five to zero. Please continue, Bruce.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I have to comment. I don't know what it's like to have a baby. But to have the last budget get passed, it's got to be awful like delivering a child. Okay, next up is resolution 2120 to the Honorable Board of Commissioners. We recommend the approval of the 2021 budgets for the special revenue funds, debt retirement funds, capital project funds and enterprise funds of the County of Hillsdale. Respectfully submitted Bruce Caswell and I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Support.
All right, motion made by Bruce, supported by Ruth. Questions or comments?
These are all the funds commissioners and new commissioners. These are all the funds that have those little pots of money in them that are floating all over the place. And we eliminate, we try to keep eliminating them as, as we go and as we eliminate them, move the money to the appropriate place and so on. So it's, it's a constant ongoing look at these things in order to keep them in line. And this was one of the things, as Mark mentioned at the last meeting, that our auditors really emphasized to us that we need to keep, keep the number of these funds down and when they're no longer needed, get rid of them.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Caswell.
Yes.
Commissioner Carolyn.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines.
Yes.
And Commissioner Wiley.
Yes. Passes five to zero. Please continue, Bruce.
Okay, the only other thing I've got, Mr., Mr., is I listened to a Zoom meeting on the Rural, uh, Task Force, which has to do with road funding of a specific pots of money. And I just want to make the commissioners aware that for 2021, there are three projects. One of them is to redo Main Street in North Adams, East and West. Uh, the second one is to do Camden Road between Coleman and Tuttle Roads. And the third one is to take care of a bridge, the Territorial Road, which is, uh, down by Carpenter Road, which is kind of on the side of the county. So those three projects are going to be funded out of these special things. And this Rural Task Force meets and puts in these funding mechanisms. Uh, for 2022, looking at doing Camden Road between Tuttle and they're looking at doing Montgomery Road, uh, between Cambria and South Hillsdale. So just for your information and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ruth, were you keeping track of time?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll keep moving then. Julie's up, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to start, um, with resolution 2117. To the Honorable Board of Commissioners, we recommend the following grant application policy be adopted as follows. Prior to submission, all grant applications must be reviewed by the Finance Director. All reporting requirements of the grant must be specifically stated as to who will be responsible for the reporting and as to the timeline of the reporting requirements. Any grants requiring financial matches must be pre-approved by the Board of Commissioners and all grant funding must be accepted to the county by the Chair of the Board. Respectfully submitted, Julie Gaines.
I second that.
Derek, do you have any comments? Is this, uh, I know you've been dealing with a lot of these grants, uh, is this, you have any comments, I guess?
Um, I guess I don't have anything. I guess I don't have any issues with it.
Where this came from was Bruce. Do you want to address it, Bruce?
Well, I know we've talked about this before, Ruth, and, and I know, uh, this year in particular with all the different grants and, and, uh, you know, COVID money and et cetera, there's been a lot of them that Derek's been handling. I think this is not necessarily related to COVID, but it's related to some of the other grants for the courts and stuff that, uh, you know, we've been inundated with. Not that we want to turn away any money, but we want to make sure we know, especially in the case of, uh, grants that require a match.
Yeah, it's, it's related to finance. Because the last line where it says any grants requiring financial matches must be pre-approved by the commissioners. That's to help so that we don't get caught with our pants down where, you know, some department head, um, is doing a very good job and is applying for grants and everything else and everything. It's just to see that we're all on the same page. So that we don't get, they, they come up and say, okay, I got this grant, but it requires a match. We'd like to know that ahead of time so that we can budget for it.
I guess, this is Derek again. I guess one thing that maybe I would change is I don't necessarily want to review everyone's grant applications. I more want to be notified that they're applying for a grant so that I'm aware that it's happening. I can look into the, um, the general ledger tracking requirements and I can, uh, make sure that I have it recorded, especially if it's a federal grant, um, recorded, uh, on our schedule of expenditures of federal awards, um, which is required for single audits, which pretty much we are always at the single audit threshold, um, at least for the foreseeable future with as many uh, grants as we've obtained in the last couple of years. Um, so like I say, I just want to make sure that I know it's, it's happening. Um, I don't necessarily need to be a part of, of filling it out, reviewing it or making sure they got it right. I think that kind of falls to the person that is applying for the grant.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Yes, I think I concur with what, uh, Derek just mentioned. It's the head department, just for example. It's the head department, just for example, the Sheriff Department, and they're applying for a grant, it's federal level. I think that information that they have acquired from when they're pursuing that grant, and when they have that grant number there, the figure, that needs to be sent to Derek so that, uh, there is that establishment that they know that that matching would be, you know, something that Derek would know and, and it's in place. Uh, so I think this should be given to Derek in advance. And if there is any language that needs to be in place within that resolution, that the department heads need to provide that information to Derek, that there is a grant in place and they're pursuing it, and there's that matching fund, uh, or any of that kind of a language that needs to be placed within that resolution. I think it's important that Derek needs to be notified, or at least, uh, be, uh, copied on it.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, please.
I think this is a great resolution. I think Commissioner Gaines is to be commended. This needed to be done for a long time. And we can quibble over a word, but by reviewing it, Derek is going to be looking at it and going to be made aware of it. And we're not going to get caught like we did with a grant years ago where we have to contribute twenty thousand dollars every year in order to keep the grant, and we're still paying that twenty thousand dollars every year now. And I think this is fine, I think it needs to be passed, and I, I think the wording is good.
Further comments? Roll call.
Commissioner Carolyn.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
Passes five to zero, please continue, Julie.
Um, I have two other topics, uh, to cover really quickly. Randy, um, received the, um, HVAC contract, um, with, um, us signing with, uh, Todd Daley, uh, Daley Engineering, and, um, accepting the bid from, um, Griffiths Mechanical. And he would like us to, um, give him permission to go ahead and sign that contract. I didn't get it till early this morning, and I did forward it to everyone, did everyone receive it?
I got it.
Julie, I got it too.
Believe I've got it sitting in front of me, Julie, I think this is what Randy brought up to us.
Yes, um.
May I get a copy of that for Eric as well, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll forward it after, Stephanie.
Okay, so, we made a motion.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I can make the motion, Mark.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion that, um, we allow, uh, Randy Finley, the, uh, to sign the contract, uh, for the HV, oh my gosh, HVAC system, uh, being installed in the courthouse.
I second that.
Okay.
Did you get that, Jody?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay.
All right, is there any questions? Did everybody get a chance to? Like Julie said, she sent it out late, but it's, it's a pretty standard contract, uh, with Hillsdale County, Todd Daley, and Griffiths Mechanical.
I thought everything was covered in there, and Randy did review it, and, you know, recommends that we allow him to sign it, obviously. So I'm bringing it forward.
There ain't no discussion, unless there's a comment, we'll vote on it. Vote on the motion. Go ahead.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Carolyn? Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion passes five to zero. Earlier, if you recall, we did pass the, uh, yes, motion for the HVAC funding, so that's, that whole project is moving forward. So thank you one and all on that. Please continue, Julie.
Okay, the other thing that, um, you received yesterday afternoon, uh, from Dave Slifka, who's the President of the Ambulance Association, is, um, the millage allocation, um, for the Ambulance Association, both for operational and capital millage, that, um, was discussed at the October twenty-seventh meeting of the Ambulance Association. Um, if you would just review that, I'm going to bring that forward as a resolution at the next meeting, um, for us to pass. This is something that we do every year.
Yeah, Julie, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Uh, the email that, that you received from David Slifka, I did not receive that.
I, I didn't either, Julie.
Okay, you guys are both copied on it, um, but I will send it.
Try my copy.
Maybe, you know what, maybe I'm wrong about that, maybe you weren't copied on it.
There was twenty-some people, Julie.
Oh, no. I'm sorry, I just, I guess I assumed that you were copied on it. So I'll send that, there were so many people on it, I'll forward it right now.
Yeah, thanks, and so when you send it, so will, will we review this on the twenty-second? Or will we review it for the twenty-second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Try my county email, Julie, please.
Okay.
Travel Girl doesn't seem to be working so good.
Okay. Did you get it, Bruce?
Um, I didn't get anything on my home email, and I, my little jobby-doo iPad thing, I'm a jiggie's upstairs.
Okay.
I can't connect two at the same time, our signal isn't, our chipmunks aren't strong enough, I would hear.
All right, well, I'm sending, I'm sending it to everyone's county email. Like I said, I'm not going to bring the resolution. Just so that you're aware, that was, um, voted on and accepted at the October twenty-seventh meeting. And it's the same thing that we do every year for the millage. So I'll just be bringing that forward. If there's no other questions, that'll conclude my report.
I, Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Kind of a question. Well, I know we've been around this ballpark, Commissioner Gaines, before, but in light of what we heard earlier today, um, when we bring this thing up for a vote, uh, I'm, I'm just going to tell you, I'm going to make a motion to withhold a certain amount of money from Reading Emergency Unit and put it towards whoever the hospital ends up getting that will actually transport the mentally ill from Hillsdale Hospital to wherever they need to go. Uh, I don't know what the amount of that'll be. We can think about that or talk about it between now and the next meeting, but, um, I just, I'm not going to support, I'm not going to support giving all of it to Reading if they're not going to take care of this issue, so, just so you know.
I agree with, I agree with Bruce.
Okay, we can discuss that more between now and the twenty-second, or discuss it at length on the twenty-second. Um, and that did, I believe Marnie did send it out to, well, no, I take that back, it didn't get sent out to everybody, Julie, so you'll have to send that out. I would recommend sending it to the county email and, and the personal email. I've been having to do that with a lot of different things, and it shows up in one and not in the other, or vice versa.
Okay.
We've just got so much going on virtually right now that the system is a little overtaxed, so.
Okay.
I had something last, it was either last week or the week before, showed up in my personal email from the state on one of these grants, and it showed up about six hours later on the county email, so go figure.
Right.
And so, so I had her send it to both, and that's what happened, so, you know. It is what it is, we're in a strange time. All right, anything else, Julie?
Nope, that's the end of my report, thank you.
Thank you. Ruth, that brings us up to you, young lady.
Okay, twenty dash, one one zero. I got me pulled off at twenty-seven, I have a question.
Yes, you had a question on twenty-one one zero, go ahead.
Uh, I had understood a couple of contracts ago. Mr. Brandis was retiring.
If, if you would for the viewing public, since we polled that, if you would read that, please.
Uh?
Because we're going to have to vote on it since it was polled, if you would please read that, Ruth.
Twenty dash, one one zero. We recommend the chairperson of the Hillsdale County Board of Commissioners be authorized to sign the probate and juvenile court's legal services contract between Hillsdale County and Roy Brandis. This is a six-month contract commencing on the first of January, twenty twenty-one, through June thirty, twenty twenty-one, in which Mr. Brandis shall be compensated not to exceed thirty thousand dollars for six months, which is five grand a month. Respectfully submit.
I second that, if that's the motion.
Okay, so my question is, a couple of contracts ago with Brandis, I was told that he was retiring. And since then, we've had a couple more contracts, and now another contract. So what happens to his retirement? And why is this just a six-month contract? And what's going to happen the other six months of the year?
Okay, uh, your information on his desire to retire is correct. Actually, when I met with him approximately a year ago, he had told me at that time that, uh, he didn't want to do more than a one-year contract, and that's what we approved, we were going more or less at this time. Um, in speaking with the judge, he submitted paperwork to extend that six months, um, at the same rate he is currently, which is the five thousand per month. Um, she in turn was going to talk to him and see if, if she couldn't get him to do the whole year. But in interim, I told her we best get this in place, um, because with COVID and everything, she hasn't been able to really sit down and talk with us. Um, so that's kind of where we're at. She's a little concerned as well, what we're going to do with the other six months, but, uh, I guess that's one of those things that I'll let her work out. But that's, that's kind of the long and short of it, Ruth.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this? There ain't none, we'll do the vote.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. Please continue, Ruth.
Okay, so, Suicide Prevention Coalition of Hillsdale County is continuing to meet on the third Tuesday of the month, virtually. But what we're going to do is we're going to change our meeting time to noon. We're meeting at one right now. And we've got a couple people who have other meetings at one and who work, and who it would be better to meet during the lunch hour. So, starting on the fifteenth of December, our meetings will be at noon, virtually, for an hour every month, third Tuesday. We're going to continue meeting, um, we have a new member that's come on board. That's very helpful, and we're doing good with what we can do with being, um, COVID impact, not being able to have, um, activities in the community like we normally would. We're piggybacking off of Jackson's Suicide Prevention Coalition. They, they meet every month, and I would, I'm, I'm, I'm on their call, I was on it last night. Um, we are doing activities with them, pretty much, instead of trying to do our own, and theirs are all virtual. Um, tomorrow is an all-day, December the ninth, eight-thirty to four-thirty, is a youth suicide prevention summit that Lifeways is putting on. That all the board of Lifeways is going to be on, at least for part of the day. So that's very good. We're doing what we can do, but it's not enough. It's not nearly enough, because suicides are up, and there's a lot of problems, and, you know, we're not doing what we should be doing, but we're doing the best we can under the circumstances. Um, Lifeways is very busy right now with committee meetings. I've got one today, one tomorrow, one Thursday. Um, and the board meeting is next week. Um, also, Julie and I have one last Michigan Works meeting in this month that we're both going to be on, virtually. And that will be the end of Julie and my's term on that board, that meeting will be our last meeting. And then I think I have one more Human Services Network meeting on the fifteenth that I will be on, and that will be my last meeting on that. My term will be ending on that, so. That is basically what I've been working on, it's a busy, busy month with a lot of meetings and boards and things, finishing things up for the end of the year. Tomorrow, I have nine virtual meetings. All in the same day, everything shoved back because of the end of the month, it's Christmas, and then we won't have anything for a while. So unless there's any questions, that's my report.
Any questions for Ruth? There ain't none. I believe that brings us to an MO. Commissioner Carolyn, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for that opportunity. Uh, you know, in the consent agenda, I may have not been able to speak on that, but there was a resolution, the twenty dash one oh nine. Um, I know it passed as, with the consent agenda, do you want me to, uh, uh, talk a little bit about it?
If you want to say a few words about it, you're free to, I mean, it's, we've talked about it before, but you're more than welcome to add real estate.
Absolutely, thank you, and thank you for passing it earlier. Uh, just a minor thing on that twenty dash one oh nine. Um, I, uh, we, we were waiting for the account number, and so for the payment for the equipment, uh, would come from the account number, and I just want to reiterate, just, uh, for the record of the minutes, it would be one, zero, one, zero, zero, three, zero, one, nine, seven, seven, zero, zero, zero. Now, there's a seventeen thousand dollars in the two zero, in the twenty twenty budget for such equipment purchases, so that's all I wanted to say on that. So that is the account number from which it will be coming out. Now, moving forward, I, I don't know, did you have any question on that, or are we good to go forward?
We've got it here, so we're good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so moving forward, um, it's been a busy couple weeks for us at District Five. Uh, let me just begin with the, uh, show. He, I already sent you a copy a few days back, everybody has a copy, so there was a technical concern, uh, for the breakdown, uh, by the nine-one-one central dispatch, so that's why you don't see the breakdown of the non-emergency calls and the emergency calls. But the total that is being provided to us is eight hundred and sixty-eight. Uh, and, um, so that is what it is. Um, a few days back, I, I also had the opportunity to hear a couple of invoices. Um, I'm not quite sure if they sent it from the Medical Examiner Investigator, uh, but that was my last meeting there, with the Dr. Casson and the team. Um, and, um, just to kind of put a little bit light that, uh, Jackson Elm Road, uh, that is where our morgue has been transitioned. But Sarah Palmini, those of you who know her, she's the, uh, Tari County Coordinator. And so there is a part-time coordinator who sits at the Adrian location, um, for the MEI. So just kind of wanted to, uh, let you guys know about that. A few days back, um, I was able to attend virtually the Community Action Agency meeting. And the Community Action, that was my last, uh, Community Action Agency meeting. And the Community Action, that was my last, uh, Community Action Agency meeting. And a couple of, um, insights about what they're doing with the Head Start uh, program. A lot of things they've been doing is virtually. Um, Head Start and early Head Start budget was, uh, reviewed. And what they talked about was the financial budget expenditure reports for both the Heads Head Start were shared with that month, uh, for the twenty twenty, uh, back in September, which ended back in September. And expenditure is off to a slow start. Uh, that is what was reported compared with last year, uh, just because of a little later start. And all the numbers that are, uh, lower than last year, that was also discussed a little bit within the financial report. A little bit about, uh, that there was about seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars that was received from the CARES Act. And, uh, that have been able to specifically for the COVID-related programming. And, uh, what else? They talked about that they had been using those funds to purchase the PPE. Uh, they also purchased the virtual tablets for the families, staff technology uh, for the UVC machines and to sanitize the classrooms. And, um, what else? They also mentioned about, uh, that they would continue to use this money to support different unique items that if, when they do. Uh, those couple of things were talked about. Uh, they did, uh, reflect a little bit about the fall programming. And, um, they did mention that they're going to start the EHS on September twenty-first and, um, which actually started on then, and in-person classes that would uh, that went down until October fifth. And over the course of the last four to five weeks, uh, what they did, uh, reflect was that they had to navigate shutdowns for staff that are in quarantine. So they had staff shortages. Uh, they did discuss about they were not able to use subs to reduce the number of people in and out of classrooms, but teachers, uh, children, parents. They were very excited to be back. So virtually learning, virtual learning, uh, continues to blossom. That's what they reflected uh, as they maintain a waitlist for, uh, the classrooms back in Jackson. So it's a little bit of update over there and for Hillsdale County as well. And, um, there is an event, or there was an event, uh, which was a virtual talk and teaching event, November twenty-fifth. And that was pretty exciting. Um, I I did, uh, get to hear a little bit about that particular program. And, um, basically, um, uh, those were interesting. Reading tips, uh, story reading, activity tips. Uh, I think it was a pretty unique, um, it was a play pickup event. And, uh, the the focus was on, um, zero to three years of age. So that was something really nice that was set up all, um, virtually, and so this is, uh, something really nice to hear that Community Action Agency still, you know, puts in a lot of effort in getting, uh, with a great start on Hillsdale, um, uh, platform. And with that, I conclude my report unless there's any question.
Any questions for NMO? Very none. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Okay. I have a couple items that I wanted to discuss with you all, uh. According to what DHHS said yesterday, they're extending the pause through the twentieth of December. After talking with the judge and some other staff members here within the county, we think it would be prudent to extend it through the third of January and assess it at that time, especially with the fact that the commissioners, uh, or not the commissioners, but the, uh, county has, uh, earned the uh, ranking of number one in the state for, uh, case rate and, uh, death ratio. At least that was a day or two ago that we received that, uh, distinction. Not something to be proud of by any means. Um, but it does indicate we still very much have the problem here. So my recommendation and and what I would ask you to concur. Right. Through the third, we'll decide whether we're gonna open on the fourth to the public. So you think we should.
If you go through the third, people might show up on the door, stuff on that Monday.
Jody brings a good point that if we if we, um, it would be, notification might be a little tricky seeing how the third is on a Sunday. Uh, the fourth would be the first business day of the new year. So the recommendation would be through the fourth, and then we would assess the, uh, situation at that point. Um, with the holidays, I've actually heard some say that that should be extended further. Um, but I think we can assess it, you know, on the third or fourth and go forward from there. Is there any comments from the commissioners or any of the elected and department heads that are on at this time? I will be open to comments on that.
I have a, I have a comment, Mark. This is Ruth.
Okay, go ahead.
The fourth is supposed to be the organizational meeting.
That is correct.
So if we do this through the fourth, does that mean then that would be a virtual meeting?
At this time, I do not plan on the organizational meeting being virtual. It would be a little hard to facilitate.
It has to be sworn in.
Yeah, because everybody has to be sworn in and take the oath and all that, so doing it virtually, I think, would be problematic.
Would would the public be able to come up and observe the meeting, or would it be just the commissioners?
Yeah, really, that's the clerks. If you recall, the clerk runs that organizational meeting until such time we have the, uh, uh, you know, chair appointed or elected. So I guess I will have to talk with Marnie and see how she wants to proceed on that, and I will certainly get back to everyone, um, either between now and the next meeting or definitely at the next meeting. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Julie, you had a comment or a question?
That was the same comment that I had.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
COVID has definitely made certain things problematic, so, but I will get, I'll get with Marnie on that. Are there any other comments? Okay. Go ahead, Stephanie.
I just have a comment. Um, we're getting quite a bit of backlash, especially because it's our dog season. But to me, it defeats the purpose of being closed to the public and allowing people to come in for a dog license. So just wanted to put it out there. That's the reason, um, it doesn't make any sense to be closed and in that, you know what I'm trying to say.
Right, right. Well, can't that be facilitated, Stephanie, either online or via the mail?
We've, we have told them that we have the Dropbox in the mail, and people walk off cussing at people and calling me and being upset, but I'm, I'm gonna stick to my guns. If that's, if we have to be closed to the public, the dog license is a big population to to be spreading, I I feel.
Well, and they don't, they don't have to come to your office for that. They can get it at their township offices.
That's true.
I mean, I've always done mine at the township. Well, I shouldn't say that. I think I missed one year and I had to come in. But, you know, it's, it's it's something that can be done differently than coming in here.
Exactly. So I'm holding my guns on that just so people know. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, um, the other thing I wanted to, and this is a question to the commissioners, because we hired these screeners and we hired, uh, um, that company to provide us that service. And when we signed that contract, that went through December thirty-first. I have spoken to Dennis. He will allow us an extension of thirty days, sixty days, or whatever, you know, we deem necessary. So I guess I'm asking for uh, input from the commissioners. This this crisis that we're in, this pandemic, will certainly be with us probably for another six months. With that said, I'm not asking you to give me a six-month extension, but I do think we need the screeners. Um, and and like I said, Dennis said he can do it on a thirty-day, sixty-day, however we want to proceed. Suggestions or comments, please?
Well, Mr. Chairman, this is, this is Bruce.
Yep.
Looking at it strictly from a money standpoint, um, if we keep these people after the first of the year, is there any money to pay for them? Maybe that's a question Derek should answer. And by money, I mean COVID money, stuff that we got, you know, months ago from the feds. There's still gonna be money in that pot to pay these people?
Uh, this is, this is Derek. As of right now, I would say, um, no, all of the grant awards that we've been working with have a December thirtieth or December thirty-first uh, deadline for reimbursable items. I don't know if there's, if something else will come out down the road from the feds or the state to pay for these types of things, but the the last of our pots is the CDBG money, and it has to be on items that were were purchased or or reimbursed in this fiscal year.
And that, Derek, that costs us, those screeners costs us, and we're paying for it through COVID money that the feds gave us, but that costs us about forty-five hundred bucks a week. Is that right? Forty-two hundred?
I actually have a bill right here, so I'll look at it.
How convenient.
Uh, it was about thirty-five hundred bucks for thirty-five hundred from November sixteenth to November thirtieth.
Thirty-five hundred for half, half a month. So, Mr. Chairman, my point in all of this is, if you're extending this thing, if you're gonna extend it and have them here, understand that unless something happens out in Washington or up in Lansing, you're paying for these people after the end of the year out of general fund money.
Understand. That's why I wanted to bring it to the full board for discussion, because I, I think they have served a purpose, but yet I'm very aware of what you're indicating. Yeah, the money to pay them has got to come from somewhere. So.
And that's seven thousand bucks a month, so.
Yep.
Just something to keep in mind.
Well, I guess at this point, you know, and I can certainly have further discussion with Derek, um, I I guess I would at least ask that we do a thirty-day extension. Um, and then, of course, the new board and myself will have to decide where we go, but I I will stress the, uh, monetary issue with the new board. It will it will force, uh, force us to find seven thousand dollars, but I, I I'm a little reluctant to say goodbye to the screeners at the first of the year based on our current numbers.
But if the, if the buildings are closed, now I know you're, you're just saying through the fourth of January, so I understand that's not the whole month of January. But in this period, when the buildings were closed, how are you using the screeners?
They, they are, they are opening the door for the people, and they're coming in for appointments. Uh, most of the offices are providing the screeners with a list of who's coming in for appointments so that, for instance, somebody from Stephanie's office doesn't have to run downstairs every time somebody shows up for an appointment. The screener is, uh, number one, letting them in for their appointment, and number two, screening them. So that has limited our staff exposure to some degree.
Well, you've got time between now and when the new board comes in. I'm not comfortable with making a decision and saying we're gonna extend this out another month. I think that should be the new board's decision. I am comfortable with saying we'll keep these screeners in place through the fourth, which will only be one day, because they won't be there the first, second, and third. Um, just do it for the fourth, and then the board will have to decide, the new board will have to decide what they want to do.
I, I can make that happen. I can discuss that with Dennis, and we'll, we'll make that happen then, if that's if everybody's in agreeance with that unless somebody strongly objects.
No, I agree.
The only thing I'm gonna say is that the new board, their first actual business meeting, isn't till January twelfth. You know, the organizational meeting is for organizational purposes. It's not for county business, and your first meeting's not to the twelfth. So.
We can, we can add a business item to that organizational meeting, once, once everybody has sworn in.
Okay. Can put any other justice that needs to be addressed.
I was told in the past that we couldn't, because I tried to do that before. I tried to add a, a business item to the organizational uh, meeting at one time in the past, and I was told I couldn't do that, that we couldn't do that.
Well, all I can say to that, Ruth, is twenty twenty has changed a lot of things. And, you know, we have to try and go with the flow on this pandemic, so. But your, your, your comments, Ruth and Julie, are well noted. So once again, I'll have to take it up with Marnie, because technically that's her meeting, or at least the start of it is. But we'll, we'll work out the details on that, and I'll let you know. But other than that, I'll talk to Dennis about a one-day extension, so. And that's pretty much all I have unless someone's got a question for me at this time. Um, I do have one thing that I wanted to ask Derek. Do you want to discuss at all with the board the progress we're making on, uh, the workman's comp?
I, I can just let you know that we're expecting to receive a, uh, a quote for a fully funded workman's comp program, uh, this week, hopefully today. Um, and as soon as we have that information, we're going to do a, a comparison over our self and our self-insured plan, the history of it, and what that could have potentially looked like under a fully funded plan. Uh, and I'd also like to share that, um, most counties generally are self-funded on workman's comp. In the past, there hasn't been a lot of workman's comp, um, options for county government. Um, that's kind of something that's new, from what I understand. At least in talking to, uh, a gentleman that we've been working with named Patrick Vaugh, or Patrick Hitchcock from Boss Insurance Industries. Um, another thing I'll share is that he, he kind of mentioned our lost history was pretty good over the last couple decades. We haven't had a lot of major incidents. Um, well, obviously, we had the big one that kind of has sparked all of this. Um, and I think it's been a good exercise for us, you know, ir-irregardless of what we do workman's comp wise, I think this has been a good exercise in not only understanding our own program that we are operating under, um, but potentially understanding some of the, our options, so. Just a quick update, your next meeting, hopefully you'll have something in front of you and hopefully a decision to make on whether you want to continue with what we're doing, or if we wanted to uh, look at this fully insured plan, um, which is gonna have a significantly higher premium than what we pay now. Um, but hopefully, the fluctuation of claims won't be as impactful on our, on our finances.
Thank you, Derek. And we are hopeful that we'll have something for the next meeting, and I think, uh, it, it's, the major difference would be is making a consistent or steady payment like any other premium payment versus paying, you know, monthly. paying, you know, monthly and then having to deal with a catastrophic payment like we have here in the last year and a half. So, but been good fruitful discussion so far. So anyways, public comment. Anyone wish to comment at the time?
Mark, I just, I don't know if this is her public comment, but I've got, I don't know, fifteen copies of audit proposals, and I don't know what, where we stand on that right now. Nobody's come in to look at them whatsoever and wondered what the deal was, I guess.
Stephanie, I, I was going to get with you and kind of review all of the proposals with you. And then I thought we could kind of come at a consensus on what we wanted to do and then propose that to Commissioner Caswell. And then after that, potentially the rest of the board at the next meeting.
Okay, nice to know. Thank you.
I think that sounds like a good plan. Thank you, Stephanie, Derek. We'll get that in front of the finance committee, and, and hopefully that'll come to us next meeting as well. So, thank you for that. Any other public comment? Hearing none. Additional business. Julie?
Mr. Chairman, would you like to speak of the potential of having other meetings this month so that everyone's aware of the potential of it?
That'd be fine. I talked with Julie this morning. We may have a few items. In particular, we're still working diligently on contract negotiations with the Sheriff's Department. And if we need a third meeting this month, it would be potentially on the twenty ninth. But I'm reluctant to pull the trigger on that yet. And we'll see, we've got mediation on, well, tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon with both units. So once we have that, if we can get that in front of the board on the twenty second, we won't need a meeting on the twenty ninth. But there is the potential, so I guess to Julie's point, tentatively mark down the twenty ninth and keep it available, please. So, thank you, Julie. Anything else on your part, Julie? No? Okay. Ruth?
I'm good. Thanks.
Nemo?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to recognize David Saco, David Holcomb from the IT, and Scott Sharp, you know, this team, the entire team. I wanted to recognize all the great work, especially on important factors that they've been dealing with IT issues, and now that we're needing it constantly. And I just want to appreciate all their contribution and how often their hard work is recognized and not that I want to recognize. And I just want to celebrate all the results that they've had, you know, with our technical departments, especially with the Sheriff's Office, and they've been always a great help. And so I just wanted to talk a little positive about that. I want to appreciate all that they have done, the entire team of the IT. So thank you.
David, and I say thank you.
You're welcome, Scott.
Bruce, any additional comments?
Two things. First of all, when I came on the board six years ago, I heard a lot of, no, not a lot. I heard some negativity about David Holcomb and how the IT department was being run. And I have seen nothing but positives out of that man ever since, particularly since I got involved with the, with the budget. He's done a wonderful job for the county and quite frankly, has been a godsend in this last year. And I want to thank him for his public service. The other thing is Judge Smith. There's an old saying amongst politicians that judges get elected, they get black road disease. They start to think they're pretty wonderful people and so on and so forth. And I've been very impressed with Judge Smith, his down-to-earth attitude, his humbleness, his fiscal responsibility. He's been a very good judge for the citizens of this county in terms of locking up people that don't belong on the streets. He, he is a man of great integrity. When he gives you his word, he keeps it. And as I've said, fiscally, he ran the first court for years on a shoestring and did a good job with it. Not that there's anything wrong with it now, but he did a very good job with it. And he did that for one reason, one reason only, in order to save the county some money. And I think he really understands and has never forgotten the culture in Hillsdale County and what it's about. And I just, I have great respect for the guy. And it's too bad that he's retiring. I guess we all get old. I know that myself. He's been a real boon to this county. He's done a wonderful job. And I've had the opportunity up in Lansing to see some other judges at work. And I can tell you that I didn't meet one that came close to the integrity and the honesty and the humbleness of Judge Smith. I want to thank him for his public service. Done a great job for this county. Thank you.
Bruce, I can't help but say, and I know you've referred to age and getting older many times. And something that has always stuck in my head about old soldiers never die. They just smell that way. With that, I'll thank everybody for attending and have a great week. Be safe.
Thank you, everybody.
We are adjourned.